Good afternoon, Lacon. Thank you so much for coming out today. Volume up. Please closer. Alright. Guys are a little snappy. Um, couple of quick host speaking items and then we will get started. Um, what a great turnout. Thank you guys so much from the bottom of our hearts. Um, I swore around chairs. I encourage lapsing, but that might be a bit closer now while we want to get the camera over. Um, handbooks are obviously marked. Um, washings are just out that way there. Uh, we encourage everyone to wash their hands. In the face of a coronavirus epidemic, we are first and foremost physicians, so lots of hand washing, fist bumps, waves to your friends. Um, so, uh, my name is Dr. Kathy Unger. Oh, and just one quick mention story. We are live streaming this on Facebook. Um, so hoping for people who can't be here and they're able to hear this message as well either now or those videos will also be uploaded afterwards. Uh, so it can be viewed for people who weren't able to breathe the storm today. Um, so we thank people who are tuning in on Facebook and, um, when it comes time for questions, we'll maybe try to answer those Facebook questions now. If not, we'll work us to get them later. Okay? Everyone can hear me okay? Awesome, okay. So my name is, uh, Dr. Kathy Unger. I've been a family physician here in Lacon for the last 12 years. I'd like to thank all of you for coming out today to hear our thoughts and concerns for our healthcare system. Seeing so many familiar faces is such a blessing and your support means a great deal to us. Special thanks to Mayor Chrissy for being here. I saw him somewhere. Where's he at, Mayor Chrissy? Hi. I know you care a great deal about our community and your presence is appreciated. Um, I also extended an invitation to our MLA Mr. Orr. Uh, is he here today? No, okay, that's right. Um, I'm honored to share this stage with my fellow physicians and I'd like to take a moment to introduce them. Uh, that's at the far end to maybe you should tell. Uh, Isaac Badiker, Kenny Smith, Chris Popeter.
Is that Antoinette May?
Antoinette May. She's little. Ezmyel Brooks, uh, Semion Nidot, Wendy Howery, the handsome Matt Unger. And Christine. Uh, there are a few physicians that aren't here today. Uh, they were unable to be here, uh, due to drought and, uh, Dr. Tim Darrell is currently serving our community in the emergency department. Combining our total years of service to the community of Lacon, we have served this area for over 280 years. Physicians come here. Uh, for the most part physicians come here and stay here. We work hard to offer several services to this region. This includes our clinic-based medicine, including our walking clinic, which provides daytime and evening access. We keep the ER stocked 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 24/66 day of the year. We look after our patients admitted to the hospital. Uh, we provide care to surrounding communities such as Bentley and Basham. And we provide care for the elderly or those with higher needs such as the long-term care and rural village. Many of us also do home visits and family care. We have the third busiest emergency department in our region, second only to Red Deer and Tasspen. Between our two clinics, Main Street Medical Services and Family Medical Associates, we have nearly 28,000 active patients. We are the physicians that are committed to providing high-quality medical care to Lacon and surrounding areas. But more than that, we are also members of this community. We have built our homes here. We play sports in local leagues, volunteer our time to educate the public on important primary care topics, and we get involved in our neighborhood activities. We are raising our families here. My children go to school here and I am so thankful for the education they have received. I support our teachers and our s- our teachers and schools during this challenging time for them as well. We are Laconians, if that's what you call us, or Laconians, I don't even know. But we are and we are proud of it. What we are not is politicians. We are also not public speakers or professional speechwriters. We don't claim to be experts in political science or economics, but we do believe we are experts in healthcare and its application to our patients. We care deeply about our patients and this community and that is why we are here today. Our hope is to provide a balanced point of view of the healthcare changes being imposed by the government of Alberta and to help dispel some misinformation that we believe the people of Alberta have been given. We ask for your patience and attention for a few minutes while we do our best to become public speakers and share our concerns. We will then welcome your questions. I'd like to start off this discussion with a few key messages. Firstly, we understand the challenging economic state in Alberta. We know jobs have been lost, incomes reduced, and families are hurting. We see it on the faces of our patients and we have our own friends and family members experiencing losses in this difficult climate. As physicians, we understand the need to make cuts to help our healthcare system be fiscally sustainable. We've taken cuts over the last several years and we were quite prepared to again. Our concern here today is not facing financial losses, but rather the types of cuts this government is imposing and its implications on rural family medicine. Secondly, we are afraid. We fear for the future of healthcare in our province. As I said, we've faced wage decreases before, but we have never felt that frontline primary care has been under attack like it is now. I don't believe a town hall type meeting like this has ever been executed in our community before for this purpose. We are truly fighting for family medicine and our patients right now. And thirdly, this is not a political event. We are not here to endorse or condemn any political party. As I mentioned, we don't want to be politicians. We just want to be doctors that can do our jobs and provide our patients with the care they need. So here we are on a snowy Saturday afternoon talking about healthcare when I'm sure we'd rather be at home sipping cocoa in our pajamas. I'd like to take a moment to discuss the events of the last few months that led to our meeting today. In the fall of 2019, the Alberta government invited the Alberta Medical Association, or the AMA.
Sorry, can you pause for one minute?
I'm gonna pause for a minute. And saying maybe, "Chochin." Technical difficulties.
Can we open the doors and turn the heat down? It's gonna get hot here.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Matt's phone keeps ringing to Candy Crush, so. Alright, we're back in Vegas. So in the fall of 2019, the Alberta government invited the Alberta Medical Association, or the AMA, to negotiations. The AMA is our representative body and has successfully negotiated with every previous government for the last hundred-plus years. We know this government is committed to balancing the budget and we expected their efforts to reduce healthcare spending. Around the same time, the Minister of Health proposed 11 consultation items or areas where they plan to change physician compensation in efforts to save money. The AMA, as well as the Alberta College of Family Physicians, immediately raised concerns that these 11 items would disproportionately and unfairly affect family medicine and have serious negative impacts on patient care. The AMA rather offered an across-the-board fee decrease of 3% to all physicians. This would result in a healthcare savings, uh, cost of about $150 million a year. Unfortunately, the Minister of Health rejected this offer and before the AMA could counter with another offer or go to arbitration as requested, uh, the health minister unilaterally terminated our contract, um, as of February 20th. This was an unprecedented move, uh, one that has never been done in Canada since the Canada Health Act was created. Minister Shangro declared that those 11 consultation points would be implemented, uh, effective April 1st of 2020. This is despite physicians across all specialties raising concerns for their impact on patient care, primarily, uh, primary care. I'd like to now invite my colleague, uh, Christine, to explain in greater detail what a few of these consultation items are and what they mean to you as our patients.
Hello. Hello, Christine. Um, so, um, sorry. I'm usually loud enough, but I guess not today. Uh, okay, so. In terms of these specific consultation items, can I hear you still? Okay, wow, okay, how about this? How about this, is it better?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, so, the first change, um, and I've kind of broken it up into the proposed change and how it's gonna impact you guys. Because the reason we're here is not because this impacts just us. This impacts our patients and our town and, and how our, our clinics work. So the first change is the loss of the complex time modifiers. What that means is, is that, um, each, yes. Uh, sorry. What that means is that it, is that each physician spends a certain amount of time, um, with a patient. Past that time, there used to be ways to bill extra for more time. It was less money than seeing other patients, but it was enough money to keep that viable, okay? Um, with the loss of those complex modifiers, for many practices to continue paying their overhead, physicians will have to have shorter appointments, which means more appointments to do more complex things. The second is that drivers' medicals for seniors used to be covered over the age of 74 and a half years old. Moving forward after April 1st, that won't be the case. So for our low-income seniors who are on fixed incomes and who have their license as the main way of maintaining their independence, this could jeopardize that. Um, complex care plans were a way that some physicians used, uh, to group together more complex patients with multiple formities and to take time to try to identify all the resources that were available to, to manage those individual diseases and then say, "How can we best help you?" That takes time and it was a great way that I've had since I trained as a resident to manage current diseases. That entire process is being eliminated now. Um, the next is good pay cuts. And essentially what this means is that, um, that when someone comes into the emergency room who doesn't have a fixed address or a working healthcare number, um, these physicians aren't, aren't paid if they don't have an address or, or some way for Alberta Health to know who they are. So this is particularly important for the vulnerable, for the homeless, for the trans, even for different people like that. Um, and so what this means is, is that more patients aren't going to be able to, to be, more physicians won't be paid for their work in the merge. Um, the next one is a reduction of ER payments to compensate for overhead. Now, this is, is something that has been said in media a lot, that a lot of physicians don't pay overhead. And let me be clear that, um, physicians in rural locations almost, and I can speak for here. All of us pay overhead when we're in the emergency room. We're paying for our nurses in our clinic, we're paying for our clinic, we're paying for all the resources to have that clinic open, to call up results, and to manage our panels on, on a good basis. While we're working in the merge, that's still in the background. So we're paying overhead while that's happening. And, and that's something that, that's been missed and shrewd that, um, that we don't. So what they're attempting to do is to make us make less in the merge to compensate for us not paying overhead. What that will do is drop down our fees and mean essentially that some physicians will not see the utility in working in emergency anymore. Um, and the second could be longer wait times, uh, because it would be potentially through the access. Um, so, these are all, um, kind of complex points and there's a very simple video put together by s- some colleagues down in Carstairs, I believe, uh, that will help us to simplify it.
My doctor appointments are too long. They spend too much time with me. In Alberta, it is about to get worse. This is a quick video tutorial explaining how the changes that were announced on February 20th, 2020, my health minister Tyler Shangro, will affect our persons. Let's start with the basics. Up until 10 years ago, Alberta doctors got paid based purely on the number of patients they saw. If they saw twice as many patients, they could bill twice as much. It did not matter the health condition of the patient they had, the doctor was paid the same amount. Instead of doctors not getting paid for their time, they often used a little other provision policy. Think of it like going to the dentist. No one expects a dentist to fix one tooth for the same price as fixing five. 10 years ago, Alberta Health came up with a way to improve patient care. They removed complex modifiers and completely abolished the doctors spend 15 minutes or more on a patient's care. The complex modifier billing code allows a doctor to bill an extra $18 or about 40% extra for the visit, although this amount is significantly less than seeing a different patient during that time. It gave doctors some insight to deal with multiple or complex problems during the same visit. Many doctors in Alberta embraced this change. Patients that needed more of an appointment got them. Multiple concerns could be addressed at the same time. Complex issues could be sorted out. On April 1st, 2020, this is coming to an end. The government has decided to, among other things, make the complex modifiers more flexible. It will enable us to further achieve budget savings without affecting operations. Yet the exact opposite will occur. Medical costs will increase and our patients will be less healthy. Let's explain. As every doctor in Alberta is a business owner, just like a restaurant owner or small business farmer, the amount of money paid is not how much the doctor makes. Just like any small business owner, doctors have to pay their staff, rent, utilities, and all of their own equipment. This doesn't even include mandatory licensing fees, professional associations, non-practice dues, or student loan payments. Any doctor that sees patients for 20 of their visits or longer, all of a sudden they're getting their business revenue cut in half compared to doctors whose increases are retarded. Once a doctor pays their daily business costs, this model becomes unsustainable. Doctors have a choice. Go to tailor-made programs or close shop and look for opportunities elsewhere. When Alberta is hurting, doctors understand that pay cuts are necessary. But these specific cuts are setting healthcare in Alberta back 10 years by emphasizing quantity over quality. In order to survive this new policy, homeless every small business clinic across the province, from family practice doctors to specialists, can be moving back to tailor-made clinics. This means less time with your doctor. Tell them contact your local MLA, the Minister of Health, and your premier to let them know how these changes will affect you.
Okay, so, um, just as a quick little summary here, um, on how physicians are paid. Um, so essentially, we are dependent contractors that work for Alberta Health. And essentially what this means is that, um, we are paid by, by this one entity and we don't have multiple sources that pay us. Um, we're paid fee for service. Now, what that means is we're paid for an individual interaction or an individual task that we do for patients. Um, and this is not when all physicians are paid. It's somewhere on what's called alternative remission plans or ARPs. But for the most part, most physicians are paid fee for service. So from our total amount that we're paid, we pay all of our costs, our overhead, and everything else. Um, and that amount of the overhead is just the amount we have to pay to keep our doors open and to function as a business. And that amount fluctuates based on where you practice and how you practice. Um, this also means that we don't get benefits. You don't get sick leave, we don't get breakable leave or holiday pay or retirement plans or EI or any forms of compensation like that. So all of that's coming out of that number. So it's, it's very important to take into context that, that when the government uses numbers, that is not the number that we take home at the end of the day. That is the number that helps to fund the clinic, that helps to pay our staff in all the different things. To continue on from here, my colleague, Dr. Howery, will discuss the next purpose.
Thank you. So you've heard a little bit about the specifics of how these cuts will impact, uh, your day-to-day clinic visits um, and our day-to-day functioning of the clinic. Um, uh, now I want to talk a little bit about the impacts to healthcare in Alberta in general. So, number one, huge impacts to primary care. It's gonna erode the foundation of primary care. What do I mean by primary care? So primary care is the term for the care that is given by family doctors. It's comprehensive care at every stage of life. Your family doctor is your home base, kind of your liftoff place for any other medical needs or referrals that you have. Family doctors in their offices then create what we call the patient's medical home. When family doctor practices can't afford to spend more time with patients, primary care is going to suffer. In our town of 13,000 people approximately, actually mayor might be able to clarify that number more exact, but in our town of approximately 13,000 people, um, how many people do you guys think, uh, call our clinics their, their medical home? Who has family doctors in our town? Maybe throw in some numbers.
28,000.
How many?
28,000.
28,000, exactly. So we have, exactly, it's, yeah. So in our town of 13,000, we have, like Kathy, Dr. Unger mentioned, and like you said, 27,900 people have a family doctor in, and call our clinics their medical home. Evidence shows that having a robust primary care system actually saves the government money. In fact, there was a very large study from the University of Alberta, Dr. Green. Um, it showed that investing in your medical home or in primary care is, um, the best way to reduce future spending. And that makes sense. Uh, if you spend more time with your family doctor at preventing the illnesses in the first place or at least at the very least treating them before they're severe, you're going to save the healthcare system money. You're not going to end up in more expensive places like the emergency room. And in 2019, the College of Family Physicians of Canada rated Alberta's family doctors and the medical homes that they have created as the best in the country. So by doing these cuts to primary care, we're gonna go from the province that other provinces are trying to emulate to the province of some of the worst primary care. Another huge impact to healthcare is that the sickest people are gonna suffer. You heard those complex timing modifiers and complex care plans are what are being cut. So people that are the sickest are gonna have less time and they need more time. We're gonna do our very best, of course, to address the concerns in the shorter amount of time that we've been given. Um, but we might end up having to defer more and more concerns to more and more appointments. And we know how hard that is. You've taken time off work, you've gotten your rise there, this is gonna be very challenging. The next huge impact to healthcare is on physician retention. A big issue with physician retention is this massive income loss to family doctors. So as you saw in our video, doctors in rural areas are facing 25 to 45% income loss. And physicians, of course, are first and foremost concerned about the potential impacts on patient care and we will always, always work with the best interest of our patients in mind. But how are we gonna recruit and retain doctors facing those kinds of income losses? One of my dearest friends from medical school, she works in Calgary. This week, she had to quit her family practice. She has two small children and now it would cost her more money to have those two children in day home than she will make as a family physician. So she has had to leave her practice. And this is after investing 11 years of her education and six-figure student loans. Another, uh, area that physician retention will be an issue is the burnout that we're gonna see with this follow. Physicians are gonna be burnt out. It is a life we've chosen and it's, it's not an easy one. It's a true privilege and we see all of our patients as our family. But many rural doctors may not want to continue to practice in a stressful rural environment if their income is so greatly affected. Suddenly, the emotional trauma might not be worth it. The day I got the news of the government proposals with these huge cuts to primary care, I had just finished an overnight shift. And I went to have to change my scrubs twice on that shift. Uh, I could see some nurses in the audience ended up handing me my second set of scrubs that night with a shovel. Um, but it was a traumatic shift. I was covered head to toe in someone else's blood twice. And then I heard these cuts. And sometimes it's hard to come to terms with what we do in this job to see whether the emotional stress is worth it. But now that emotional trauma is gonna feel extra hard when the government is showing that they don't value the work you do. Another reason that, um, doctors, uh, doctor retention might be an issue is doctors have kind of come from far in life to work here. Um, we've left our friends and relatives behind to come to rural towns where the care is needed the most. But they could make the same pay or better elsewhere, maybe closer to family. Some doctors might be forced to leave our patients and move. Many doctors might consider retiring early. Many doctors might need to quit, like my friend in Calgary. And many might use, move elsewhere. So let's say 10% retire early, 10% change careers, and 10% move elsewhere. That could be 30% less doctors in this town or similar towns in Alberta. That means 1 in 3 of us in this room might lose our family doctors. And getting a new one here will be nearly impossible as no doctors will want to come to Alberta. Um, Christine, what is that idea speaking actually to the? So we kind of addressed a little bit through our talk today some of the myths and misconceptions uh, that the government, um, has been putting out in the media. The first, uh, false claim is that doctors in Alberta make up to 35% more than they do in other provinces. This number seems to change and, and each of their different arc. This number seems to change and each of their different earthquake and media briefings ranges fifteen percent to thirty-five percent. Um, and they aren't claiming where they got these numbers from. They've been unwilling to share their data and the Alberta Medical Association thinks that that's probably because they've been selective selective in the data they used and that they could, it could probably have been torn apart uh if they haven't terminated negotiations multilaterally. So they use some data that's inaccurate and misleading to promote their own agenda. A second uh myth and misconception uh that we've been hearing is that the government isn't doing any cuts. They're just simply stopping fee increases this year. But it's simply inaccurate. We see at no end of giving all of the cuts that are happening. There hasn't been an increase in doctor fees since two thousand thirteen. And that's despite the cost of living and inflation. But that's fine. That's something you've uh been wanting to shoulder with every year's negotiations. Uh, the third uh myth and misconception is uh that doctors uh they just want to make more money. The government of Alberta and some local employees have said that doctors are losing this opportunity to start seeing more patients so that they can make more money. Uh, if, as you saw in the owl video, if we were wanting to be in this job to make more money, we could have already been doing it. We could have already been doing that same very fast medicine. But we uh we believed in primary care and spending that time and we endorsed it like in that owl video. The last uh myth and misconception we wanted to talk about is that uh the government has said doctors weren't willing to negotiate. Um, and again, this is completely false. We did want to negotiate and the A M A brought offers. And the A M A responded to some of this uh bullying, saying, um, if there is going to be cuts, the cuts can't be in these places that are so severely going to affect patient care. And they, if there are going to be cuts, they shouldn't be uh seventy-five percent towards primary care. Uh, it should cut across all physicians in all areas. And as Dr. Andrew mentioned earlier, um, the A M A had a proposal for a three percent cut to all physicians, which would have saved over seven hundred billion dollars in four years. Plus, in previous years' contract negotiations, uh, doctors didn't even fight for more pay or benefits. They just wanted to make the cuts that were proposed the least damaging to patient care. Um, for example, in the last round of negotiations, physicians voluntarily took big cuts that found two hundred and fifty million dollars per year of savings with the negotiations of the previous government. So we'll now uh move on to uh what's what's next.
Thank you, Wendy. What's next? I am not going to give you a whole bunch of numbers or facts or whatever, but I would like to share. It's a title next, it's a title next. Great, okay. Do you close? Ready to ask? Okay. I'd like to share a story with you as to why. Okay, shall I try again? I promise I won't be in box anywhere here. So, let me try again. I'd like to share with you the journey that brought me here, the short journey that brought me here today. When we're all speak, what's next? We first saved food on Canadian swell in 1988, in nineteen ninety-three. The win consists of my better half and I, Kenneth Smith, known to many of you. And I will have to remind you afterwards, better half doesn't mean the boss. We spent all the plane, young, free, no tear plans, let's see what the next five years bring. First four to six months, then we spent all of another plane. This time, this time it was moving land in ten towns. No point your plans. When our personal contract is finished, we'll get back to mainland Canada. Instead, life took us on a different direction and we headed south back to our native South Africa. Well, this is where we are. So let's see when we're on the next five-year plan. First four, twelve months. And yet again, we stay over plane. It is in today's cold. Try living on a plane with plus thirty-eight degrees. And then you stay over plane and for when show it's minus sixty-two. That is, that is such a good news, such a good one. I tried as hard as I could, but I couldn't cry because everything was frozen. So that was the start to our next five-year plan. First four, four years. This time, I was young enough not to have to step over plane. I was able to arrive by vehicle. And that was Locom Alberta. This time, I was down and determined. Nothing was going to derail my five-year plan. Simple tattooing here, I like to plan and organize. At the five-year mark, we affected our hospital year in function. And one of our colleague, now retired colleagues and a very good friend, received a twenty-year service award. And I very distinctly remembered two thoughts that I didn't. Number one, there is no way you're meant to catch me living and working in one place for twenty years. I have big dreams and bigger plans than that. My second thought was, if you have worked and worked in one town for twenty years, you've got to be old. Sorry, yes, I'll let that later. That was twenty years ago. This one is named twenty-twenty. Marks twenty years that Ken and I have lived and worked here in Locom Alberta. So much for my dear fans. That is so meaningful. I didn't immediately start working in Locom. It took me a while, did other things. And finally, I decided, okay, I'll come and work in Locom. I walked in the door of mainstream medical services with a very full five-year plan. Then I'm within the tire. That was twelve years ago. I'm still here. And I'm not planning on going anywhere soon, anytime. I'm planning on fighting. I'm almost done, I promise. Not many, too many more five-year plans. Every year for about the last ten years, we go home to South Africa for Christmas to spend time with our family. Every time we prepare to come back to Canada, my nieces and nephew want to know why can you not stay here, way much closer to home. And I have to tell them, I cannot stay here because I have to come back home to my Canadian family to help work. You are our family. You're our patients, you're our neighbors, and you're our family. We are here today because of you. We are standing up for you, but we cannot do it alone. So what is next? Not a five-year plan, more closer to home. We have to make our government understand. We still are named the honor, the title honorable member of parliament. And now I'm getting dry and who knows, this is it. Live up to the challenge of your dream. Be honorable. Honor the contracts that we are willing to negotiate with you, to enable us to look after you. Go back to negotiating table. We will work with you. We've done it all along. But we need you to stand up, make your voices heard, and help us create this back market. Thank you.
So thank you guys so much for your attention today and and thank you for coming out on a day that we know was not easy to navigate roads and sidewalks, et cetera. Uh, we'd like to now offer the opportunity for you guys to ask your questions. Um, we want to our best and um as truthfully as we can, um, as Dr. Lee, um, so Alonie said, we need your voices. Um, this government knows that physicians are upset. Um, and unfortunately, that hasn't derailed their plans. We need them to know that patients are also upset. We need them to know that you guys don't want these changes either. So we really encourage you, yes, keep them all taking pictures on the phones. Thank you so much. Um, please send um health industry Kyler Shandro an email, call this office, similarly with um our Emily Easter around the world. Um, but we have a couple of microphones that we circulate around the room here. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to field them as fast as we can. Maybe just put an arm up if you got one.
Okay, you've talked with the doctors privately. My daughter is nursing aid. I can touch on that a bit.
Absolutely. So we are so proud of our nurses. Um, anyone who's been to any facility in our community can speak to the fact that we have top-notch nursing care. And um the way the government addresses here to the physicians is by two different um sort of representative bodies. We understand that our nurses are also, um, I think they're next on the chopping block already and and their negotiations are coming up. Uh, we stand with our nurses. Um, I can tell you right now, nurses have stayed high-bake many times. Um, and I do not want to carry on practicing in a facility, um, providing urgent care and in our offices without assistance for the nurses that we have. And the proposals to provide nursing care is also going to be profoundly damaging. So um please tell your daughter to hang in there and we do stand up for nurses as well.
Can I ask you a question? My friend over at the other night asking, um, can you not just double book an appointment in the double bill point? So put a patient in for two or three time slots and just keep going at that point. That was their assumption.
Yeah, that's your question. Yes, please try and make it to. Uh, so the answer, no. Um, we are allowed to book one patient once per day. Um, and patients that ask, we can come back in the afternoon um and see you or I see even one of your colleagues afterwards. But the way the billings are um essentially, the way they carry out, we just cannot. We get one sort of encounter with a patient per day. And so um I even heard patients say, well, can't I just pay a little extra and get some extra time with you? This hurts my heart because we are fighting for public healthcare. Um, I do not want a public healthcare system. But we we want access to do the same for everyone and and I believe strongly that people shouldn't be able to to pay for more. Um, I mean, that is the backbone of our immediate healthcare system and I have some fears that that's maybe the direction that things are going, is what these proposals are. And that's really where we will stand and fight to the bitter end on that one. So, yeah, and I love oil and gas too. Thank you for wearing that shirt today. How do we all do?
You're at talking more appointments, being your time slots, so I'm going to put off delivery on Monday. Now can we, if we both say one time slot, say it may be another time longer, can we book two time slots at the same day or is that going to be a next one the next day?
Yeah. So, yeah. And so in the past, like, you know, I have patients who I know need some extra time. And I would just say to that patient, listen, when you look in, tell us to book two time slots. That way I can give that time to you and I don't run into the next patient. Um, and and we were we were paid a little bit less, but we were still paid for that time. And this is what this is what we're losing now. So now you, now I won't be paying for that extra time with that patient, which means my expenses are still the same for that hour, but um won't be able to kind of make those expenses.
I got a couple of, next week I'll go in for X-ray answers. And I'm just wondering if I could book a long appointment for that? I don't know what the answer is, is either out of your control of time or out of your control of life. But I guess my question is, a long, long appointment for a five-minute appointment. Uh, that's, would that work for my doctor?
So the that's the problem is that there will no longer be any such thing as a long appointment. So there's your complete physical exam, right? And and typically, most of us will set aside more time for that because it is a a more, you know, thorough appointment to exam. But that idea of a long appointment with more time, that is what we're losing.
Sorry?
That's what we're losing is we have to be able to to book a longer appointment and have us be compensated for that extra time. Does that answer what you're asking?
So.
Yeah.
I think he's listening again. We get paid for a ten-minute appointment with you. If you want to spend longer time, the government used to pay us a little bit extra for that longer time he spent with you. So if I spend twenty or thirty minutes with you, I will get as much money as I would get seeing two or three more patients. But at least I'll get a little bit compensation for the extra time I spend you, spend with you. That allows me to pay my staff. If you come to you need more than ten minutes and I spend twenty or thirty minutes with you, I only get paid for ten minutes. The extra ten or twenty minutes is my free time I give to you, which I will gladly do. If it wasn't for the fact that I have to keep the doors open, I have to pay my staff, I have to pay the bills. The office that I work out and the staff that works for me are not paid by the government. I pay it out of profit. So if I start working for free, then what am I going to use to keep the doors open? That's what it boils down to, don't you?
So the short answer is then that's you make a double appointment, you can't make a long one.
Not a long one. Not a long one.
You'd have to be one appointment a day, one appointment a month.
Yeah.
As as an example, I've got to say, uh, and I'm proud to say that I don't want to see him talk to a recruiter. That's my biggest concern. So what do I have to do to help him?
You have to contact Mr. Stronger, your local R O A, and you have to tell them what you want.
Okay.
There is a petition at the board that you can sign and add to the doctor's office. They probably have some letters that you can um sign as well. And on that letter is room for you to write whatever extra you would like to. And that is what we're asking of you today, to help us make the government understand we need to spend time with you. Ten minutes is all I have.
Yeah, I just.
But we need to be compensated for more than ten minutes or we won't be able to keep our doors open. I do not want to fire any of my staff because I have several members that are the primary breadwinners in their family. I do not want to fire any of my staff because I have several members that are the primary breadwinners in their family. They have children, they have dependents. I don't want to fire them. So the change we are making is to keep our doors open, to keep them employed and do what we can in 10 minutes. And therefore, we can have more than 10 minutes with you, right? Those are good questions.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to educate us and get us up to speed. My question is. My question is. My question is, is there any optimism that we can actually influence the Health Minister at this stage or is it a done deal?
So you're asking if I'd lead a miracle? I do. Um, we have been very vocal up until this point as physicians. Um, I have, I am not a local person. I have sent many emails. I have, um, signed up for Twitter and done things that I just don't normally do. Um, and, and it isn't changing. And that's why we're here today, because we really believe that if change is going to happen, we still have, what is it, 24 days before these changes are supposed to come into effect? Um, we really do hope that if it comes to patients, that they will listen. And if not, then you know what, I will sleep tonight knowing I've done what I can do. And if we make our voices heard now and that the government knows that this is not okay, it's not okay to end contracts unilaterally, then maybe they'll know it's not okay to end teacher contracts, it's not okay to end nursing contracts, it's not okay to end other contracts. So if we make our voices known that this is not okay, maybe for our other professional colleagues, um, it might help when it comes to their negotiations too.
So what I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're going to have to book more appointments, obviously, for those complex cases, which is in turn going to make our waitlist longer to see our family physician. I love my family doctor, but, um, it does take a while to get her to see her. So how is that then going to impact the wait times at urgent care and the urgency? And also, my concern is, what is the cost, the billing cost to the overall system for a doctor's visit versus an urgent care or an ER visit? Because won't that then skyrocket that budget?
So you're tired. That essentially summarizes our whole point. Um, we will see increased wait times in the ER, we will see increased access to the ER, increased hospitalizations, all of, all things of which are far more expensive delivery of healthcare. Uh, to show up in the emergency department, the moment you register in the ER, you automatically generate a, bill us several hundred dollars to the healthcare system. That pays for the building, for the housekeeping staff, for the nurses, for essentially the whole facility. When you come see me at my office, it costs the healthcare system thirty-eight dollars. If I can see you more often and spend more time with you, say, and try to keep you pressured in the ER, that's what we need to do. So what you've just summarized there is exactly what the physicians have been pushing back to this minister saying, what you're doing is not going to save money, it's going to increase care cost while actually decreasing care application. So bang on, yeah. Other questions, yeah?
Uh, thank you. My biggest concern is, uh, uh, our medical retention because of all due respect, it'd be interesting to know how many of all of our physicians, how many physicians come from our country, having went through UVA, Royal Alex, the home, uh, without, thank you, the South African doctors coming to Alberta. Rural medicine would be even scarier than worse. So what's the attraction to come to Alberta? I don't know all that information, but I think that it needs to be strongly put to the Alberta government is with the lack of retention or the attraction to come to Alberta, uh, it's gonna get worse that way.
Absolutely. And this is why the projections are that this will harm rural medicine more than the other centers as well. Um, and, and what he's so very eloquently said, every physician that's from this town here today, no one here is from the home. So we all came here, um, and we love it here. I don't want to leave here, we are not planning to leave here. Um, and speaking of, you know, that our longevity here, that many of our physicians come and stay because we do love it here. But other rural communities and even our own, uh, if we do start losing doctors, it's going to be incredibly difficult to build spots. Okay, Canada? And, and there are already examples in other rural communities in Alberta that have lost doctors who have made commitments to come, um, which is heartbreaking. So, yeah, in the middle there, sorry, yeah, okay.
I'm just wondering, is there a place where we can go to look for talking points when we write? So then we're talking about facts.
These are awesome, I promise you they're not that long. So the Alberta Medical Association, um, if you go onto their website, they have links for patients. And will have excellent information, uh, to access that will be far greater, um, even simpler than what we've needed or to be today.
Uh, a question. Thank you, um, thank you everyone for everything you do here. My family's been in local home in some form or the other since ninety-four, moved from Stepler. So rural healthcare is very important to me, my mom has been doing it, if she doesn't mind me calling her out, as have for many years. And you guys have saved your life many times, so I thank you for that. Um, thank you for facts today. And one question I have for you is a lot of the stuff that Minister Shandreau and also the whole core of press secretaries and issue management people who are getting paid two hundred thousand dollars by this government, keep coming back to, well, we pay more per capita in Alberta than elsewhere. And since this is one of their big talking points, I'm hoping you would give us something back for that.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And we were kind of anticipating that question a bit. Um, although we can do this one, all that fun with the hard ones. Um, so. We've, uh, the Alberta Medical Association had two, um, separate entities do studies trying to figure out where the government got some of those quotes. And they have gotten a bit different data. Um, so, again, I know Kathy talked about it, we're, we're not economists or politicians. So, uh, we've tried our best to understand the graphs that we have read in different documents from the Alberta Medical Association. Um, so I'll just take a minute to find, uh, the best slides to maybe talk about, uh, a good question here. So here is a graph, uh, so this is, uh, a table showing the, uh, doctors' income in Alberta compared to standard, uh, standardized Alberta wages. So, um, many people in Alberta in all sorts of different professions and trades make a little bit more than the same trade in another province or the same profession in another province. So this table, um, tried to compare, uh, a doctor's standardized wage across Canada compared to other professionals and other trades. So you can see that, um, uh, Alberta doctors, when standardizing to other professions and trades, are not making, uh, more than the rest of Canada or other provinces. Um, and on the Alberta Medical Association, this document is available as well, so if you guys want to look at it in more detail. So, um, this slide, uh, again, one of the other areas that, um, uh, the government has tried to quote is that, um, Alberta spends a way higher proportion of their healthcare dollars on paying doctors. Uh, but this, uh, showed that that was not the case either. Um, Ontario, the Pews here, um, spent more proportion of their healthcare dollars on doctors than Alberta did. And, uh, the Ca- the Canadian average is twenty-two point two percent and Alberta is twenty-two point nine percent. And here is that per capita spending on healthcare. So the Canadian average, um, for per capita spending on healthcare is four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And, and you can see that Alberta is not the highest, um, uh, and kind of in or close to the middle of the pack, looks to be second here. They've also claimed that, uh, doctors are charging more and more as every year goes by. Um, they're trying to get more and more money of the government. So the AMA, uh, rather the totally independent groups tried to prove that as well and found that that's not accurate either. In fact, um, the fee for service claims, so the billings that the doctor, doctors are putting through are actually decreasing over time. I hope that helps a bit. Uh, great question, sorry, now we'll come to the bathroom.
There's, uh.
Right to the bathroom.
Good learning. Um, there's been a lot of talk, uh, encouraging to contact our local M L A and the Health Minister. Um, I'm not saying we should do that, we should, but I think it's these volumes that our M L A is not present here today. And so far, they. So far, the Health Minister, um, has not shown that he's listening. I think it might also, also be worth people's time to contact the Health Critic. He is, uh, N D P M L A, his name is David Shepherd, he's an M L A resident. Might be worth us contacting as well, as well as our Tyler Shandreau and Ron Or. Uh, also I have a question, you guys mentioned that doctors have actually, um, doctors have been, uh, decreasing wages meanwhile through inflation and whatnot, because living is going up, even with the cuts that you guys are implementing, how long for our little clinics to open?
You know, so again, we were prepared to see the cut at this time around. Um, and had it been that three percent or even five percent, which I believe, we theorize that that was going to be the next offer by the Alberta Medical Association, was to take a five percent cut across the board. And I think, I'm going to speak for myself here, but colleagues, I feel comfortable continuing to practice the medicine I practice with a five percent cut. Um, thirty percent though we just can't do. Is ultimately what it comes down to.
So if we didn't start seeing our patients way faster and seeing way more of them in the same time span, we couldn't stay, keep those doors open for months. It would take no time to run out of money and the ability to keep the clinic open if we don't make huge adjustments to the way we practice.
Uh, but, uh, I.
Okay, um, my understanding of the, of doctors' profession and, and the legal, uh, recourse that you have to protest this, it's your protected profession, you can't strike because you are doctors and you're responsible for our health. Um, so what I find particularly egregious from what I'm hearing is that the government has stopped unilateral negotiations. And that, as, you guys do not have recourse to argue that. And I find that very disturbing.
Sort of, yes. Um, thank you for acknowledging that. Um. We, as a, as a community, discussed, um, what are our options here? And the Alberta Medical Association is likely going to launch a legal battle into this, um, because the Canada Health Act legislate that we have the right to arbitration, which the government denied us that right. Um. Quite frankly, we would not strike, uh, simply because we care about you guys. We're not gonna leave.
You're going to.
Our, well, you know, do you know what, there's, there's ways to get around it. And there's, there's other communities that are talking about it, so they're not good. Um, but at the end of the day, we're not going to stand up for you and tell you that we're here because we care about patient care and then leave our ER unstopped or close our doors or do whatever because we just don't believe in that. So, um, but it does give us some very good options. And, and you know, as of April first, um, unless this government, uh, suddenly disclose more information to us, as of April first, if I go to work in the emergency room, I actually will not know how much I made that day. I will not know how much I'm being paid. All they've told us is that they removed from us what we previously could bill for our work, but they have not told us what they will be replacing it with. Uh, we had no contract, we had no idea what are, um, what we'd be compensated for. And that doesn't happen often in our relationship.
Just briefly, thank you for your engagement and your questions. We have a unique hopes, that's you. You hold a lot of power. And you can help us sway the politician's mind. And that's how we will stand, this is how we are keep going and we will keep looking up to you. You are our unique hopes.
In view of, of, of our aging population, who are more, I don't know, people with more, uh, people with more, uh, defined conditions and the need to spend more time with your doctors, I'm wondering if there's any consideration from another form of payment to doctors other than the, uh, fee for service?
Also, very good question. Fee for service is one way to pay doctors. Um, there is another type of physician compensation plan called A R Ps. You probably have heard that buzz, seven initials. Um, A R Ps stand for alternate relationship program, uh, which this government is heavily pushing. And I suspect that's partly why they are making the changes that they're making is to, in the end, really push primary care physicians towards the A R Ps. Um, the problem with A R Ps is they are poorly laid out and executed in Alberta to this point. Uh, there's not a good plan in case for them. So for us to all sign up for an A R P today would crash the system. It, it has not been well done in Alberta and it has certainly not been well done, especially in rural communities. Um, this government doesn't have a good plan for them as yet. Um, it allows the government to keep control as far as where we practice, how we practice, how many patients we see, et cetera, et cetera. And that makes some of us nervous, um, correction, all of us nervous. Um, the other part to that is the key word in alternate relationship program is relationship. And this government has not shown itself to be terribly trustworthy to us. Um, I don't think any of us are in a position right now where we feel like jumping into a contract with the government that doesn't honor contracts. And so, we're very nervous.
Will the petition you made be upheld after today, because we can't be here, so we can't signatures on that?
Yes, and I'll leave that to our chief, our governor over here to figure out that.
There's a, there's a question here, sir.
Is there a possibility, so you showed us all these wonderful graphs and statistics, um, I don't have a wonderful memory. So is there a way that we can even just pay doctor the footage, just a printed copy or have it posted somewhere online that we can access those specific statistics? So that we can use them in our writing?
Yes, yeah, I can, uh, definitely do that. Um, so we'll, we'll print out some copies, we'll have them at our clinic front desk, yeah.
Or post the link for this presentation onto the Main Street's Facebook page, U C Medical, uh, which is where this is also being launched.
Okay. And I know some people are just only, uh, filing out, so just a reminder, you can sign the petition at the table on your way out. But yeah, we'll have the links and the documents and.
And the second thing I wanted to add is to us as a people, I often, I came for pediatric needs and healthcare in Central Alberta and I get a wonderful warm reply from our M L A that just says, I've passed all your concerns to our health officer. Um, it's not an acceptable reply for us at this stage in our lives. We need to, now, he owes us a response and a true response. And if all the people who are firmly advocating for a true response, he doesn't have the time. He didn't have the time before this was an issue to reply to our healthcare concerns in Central Alberta. We had a problem before we were using our family doctor. So we need to. So we need to demand a response. When he sends you that form email, do not accept it as reasonable. You need to stand up for us. He doesn't have time to answer our calls. Phone him. Make him answer.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, our town has been here over a hundred years. Our family home said it here. Quite great service from the medical community here at Laphom Hospital. Uh, you started off basically talking about balance and sustainability and 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 your concern for the future. Um, I believe that we're over forty percent in terms of spending in healthcare, about twenty billion dollars. Have the twelve of you got consensus on two or three things you would suggest we change as alternatives to status quo to sustain this for future generations? Talking with your colleagues, your nurses, including services staff, janitors, and those people at the twelve, the twelve of you got two or three key things you would suggest we do locally here in our community disregarding what's happening in Devon. Have you had a discussion, a meaningful conversation to say, here's how we should rally our troops with the entire Laphom Medical Community and what can we do here?
So talk to me about proposing cost cost saving measures.
Yeah, what's the alternative to this mess we're in? What's the alternative that you have for us? Because we need leadership from people like yourselves and the food services and caretakers and janitors and ambulance drivers. We got the census of a direction we can go in Laphom. Because you're all members of AMA, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so we haven't had a formal discussion uh so far. The, this was all proposed uh February twentieth. So we have had uh so our first step was, okay, understand what uh is being pushed through. Um, how can we get, what are the actual facts? And then how can we get those facts to the public? And then like organizing this, getting letters out to our patients, those kinds of things. So those have definitely been our step one. Um, so I think we're gonna keep meeting. Um, both clinics have been meeting about what this means for our town and what we think we should do about it. But I think that's a great idea um to bring me to the next time we get together is how can we propose cost savings? Uh, but the other and the biggest thing is, is that doctors and our our representative, the Alberta Medical Association, have brought forth um ideas for just a straight up wage cut to doctors. Do not impact our patient care piece. Um, that's what we support. We just want to go back to the negotiation table. Um, and and all of us doctors have been in support of that. Um, but yeah, great idea to uh to work together.
And this certainly aren't basis Tuesday night. I mean, absolutely. We don't want to pretend for a second that we have a multi-fission system. I'm absolutely.
Right. Yeah.
Um, and and any ideas I have, I don't know if yeah, it's a great question. I'm not sure if I would list them out.
Um, we need we need to start petitions. That's that's easy to do. But we need to yeah give alternative clear direction to where we want to see it go rather than just sign petitions. We need an action plan. I think it's best led by the twelve of you and the other couple hundred people in the Laphom community healthcare system.
Yeah. Uh, I think you asked a really loaded question. It's a worldwide problem. Every country grapples with the cost of medical care.
Yep.
Um, the minute we think we figure something out, something new comes along, a better technology, it's really expensive and that is snowballing. So when will that change? When when will there be a great robot that can diagnose all of us and you know, we've lost a dead sentence or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Um, but till then, it's very difficult. What we have come up so far with is the concept of the medical home for the patient. Um, and I've worked in a few places in the world. Um, and I think that is really one way to focus on and make it work and make it work good. Um, the medical home is means that you can come to me with all your problems and um we can in a cost effective way rather than you ask me, then go to the next doctor, then go to the next doctor. Have five different opinions because you're scared or whatever, because your answers are not made. Um, and I'm not saying that I can answer all your problems, but the concept of the medical home is a journey we started five years ago, ten years ago. And I think we should compete it. We are not there yet. The primary care network, you all know, you all know it here in town by now, I would think, and it is fantastic. It is so nice for me to have a nurse who's so well educated in diabetes or food care or mental health to rather have them helping. And I think it's a cost efficient way. The other things you're looking for was food, maybe at the hospital, but people aren't giving me old food. Right? And and those in South Africa, in South Africa, you bring your own bucket, right? Um, so I I I, yeah, thanks.
I wanted to respond to the question asked about what else we could do besides letter writing and and contacting politicians. First, I want to compliment you on your presentation and your uh keeping it a non-political, non-partisan. I applaud you for that. Uh, I can't be god so charitable, I'm afraid. I think that as as much as I applaud this and I will write letter or two, um I don't think that is going to have as much impact as some other things uh in the government that passes out earplugs in the legislation. Um, I think that what we need to do is go to the people who have influence with this government. And from what I've seen, they listen to corporations and they listen to business. And if the local chamber of Congress was to put pressure on them to have the government rethink this autocratic approach to uh remuneration for physicians, that it would carry at least as much weight and maybe more than a desk full of formularies from constituents.
Following the other speaker, I'd like to thank you for some really informative um information and things that we can do. And some talking points, especially when it comes to numbers, would be excellent. And my knowledge of this is that this is, they're primarily on a cost driven exercise. So if you can try and back that up with some, like the AMA has done, but if that, if we could do that as well, that's, that would help as well. So my, I think the the biggest thing that might impact this and the wild card is COVID nineteen. So I know this one's really, really hard because we aren't seeing the impacts here. And we, and it's, but it's not a question of if, it's a question of when, okay? So if if we're gonna, if the doctors here, if family doctors are gonna have to cut back on the number of appointments and it's gonna back up into P E R and COVID nineteen comes in a community, you know, has that, has somebody potentially done the impact of that on, you know, the population in Alberta or even now on local level? And I'd suggest that maybe the AMA could maybe contract with an economist or a modeler. And it's not hard because you can find that numbers on Twitter. I looked it up. Is, you know, what is the potential impact this is gonna have? This is, I think this is gonna be the wild card in the whole thing. You know, it's it's, you know, we're, it's projecting out and that's the long term. But I I kind of suggest maybe contact, you know, we could contact the AMA and say, run some numbers and figure it out. You know, if if and when COVID nineteen hits, what's the impact gonna be on you and the healthcare system?
Yeah, that's excellent. Uh, excellent suggestion. Yeah.
I was just wondering, you touched a little bit on the primary care network, but also talking about um, we haven't touched on yet about referrals to specialists. Like, how is this going to affect the referrals to these specialists that were already waiting six months to a year to see? And um, you know, how is this going to affect that? Do you have, if you have any idea down the road what we'll do?
Um, so this is partly why these specialists have joined forces with family medicine. Um they are impacted certainly less than we would be with these changes. And yet they're screaming at the top of their lungs that this is a bad idea. And that's why, because they understand that if if family doctors have less time with patients, that gives you less opportunity to try to sort out and figure out those problems and will likely result in more referrals to specialists because I just don't have time. I I can't deal with with this complex problem right now, which then lengthens the time uh the wait to see those specialists, which costs the healthcare system more because it costs more to see a specialist than a family physician.
My other concern was with the mental health crisis here in Alberta and the opioid crisis. And if we're putting our doctors on a time schedule of ten minutes, what is the likelihood of more prescriptions being handed out instead of the long term looking at um well-being and health generally? Like, that is a serious concern, I think, for Alberta at this time.
There's something interesting that happens in a relationship um that patients will often not lead with their biggest concern. They will often not lead with their depression or their suicidal thoughts or their substance abuse or the things that we're unfortunately seeing uh growing in our pockets at this time. And sometimes it's not until we're deemed that the real reason for the visit comes out. Um, that's why we don't want to practice medicine that limits. Um, we've never wanted to, you know? That's why we didn't before. So it's a very good point.
And I'd like to thank you guys for doctors in this town. Tell you what, we didn't have you guys, we need you. The nurses, the people very well. Um I'd want to go to MLA more. He's been here a couple times and tried to talk, nobody would talk, but whatever, right? I would suggest everybody would walk by and let them know what to think of this. If we lose our doctors, it's gonna affect everybody, our city, our mayor's gonna, we have to back on things. I, it it's tough. And I've been into the on patients. And if you doctors, these guys, these doctors are gonna sit here and wait for ten minutes. What happens if you guys miss something down the road? Who's gonna be the first one whining is our MLA if they got one of their family members on. But I think we should give these guys a big hand, guys, because this is.
Thank you very much.
Um, just jumping back to the petition thing, I'm willing to take a few blank copies to where I work. I work at St Pauli Bootcamp. I can keep a petition at the front desk. We have a few hundred members coming in. So I don't know if anybody else wants to have a petition at their front desk to have people sign. I can have it into by the end of the week.
Wow, that would be amazing.
Um, I'll just go, I'll look it some off in the library right now. So I'll I'll be for anyone who wants to look it up.
Yeah. And thanks to the St Pauli Bootcamp because I've seen a lot of patients moving their basics. So well done. Made my job easier. Any other questions or comments?
Just when you think your voice might not be heard, just hear one voice. If you one voice talks and your neighbor talks and then you're on the neighbor and you're at the neighbor, it's a trickle down. Keep voicing your opinions. Don't think that, oh, I don't matter. They're not gonna do anything. I say something, just keep saying.
Thank you, yeah. Uh, you guys have blown us away. Um, and I might get a little bit emotional. Um, we didn't know what to expect today. We didn't know what we were gonna encounter as far as um the environment, so the mood in the room. Um, and again, because we understand, we know this is a oil and gas town. We know that. Um, we know we have a lot of people who are suffering right now and um we care so much about that and we want to see our whole community and our whole province thrive. Um, but to be supported in the way you guys have is very important. Are you cheering up to me?
Can I, can I also say something? Um, this, yeah, this has been a very intense time for us and I don't think, I mean, I I haven't been part of uh a total discussion like this since I've been practicing there. And I wish that it didn't take uh these sort of circumstances uh to get us all in the room together. Um, I I really appreciate the community that is in this room. And uh and I I see us as a group of physicians and as a community working together beyond this. Um, I really appreciate the comments about um, you know, being involved with the community. Your family's a hundred year family. Um, that means a lot. And I think perhaps some of the ways we can improve our healthcare is for all of us um investing in our community as well. And uh, you know, you can put a Band-Aid on things. But there's a lot of ways that we can maybe dig deeper and find the root causes, mental health issues, addiction issues. And these are things that as physicians, we we try to um, we can fix or we we help. And and I see our community being a big part of that as well. So anyways, I I love the community engagement and and I hope this is not the last time we get together like this. I hope next time's under better circumstances.
I think we'll wrap it up then. Again, thank you guys so much for braving the weather. Drive safe, wash those hands and stay healthy.